Before I call it to official, with the legal counsel here on, I left off. I'd like to have a word of prayer. And Dr. Neely has agreed to offer that up for us. So we imply.
Let us pray for the beauty of this day, the time that you've given us, for your presence in our midst, and for the decisions that we must make for all that you are in our lives. We ask that you move in a mighty way, that we who are stewards of this city and residents of this city be able to make the right move and the right decisions. We ask that your presence be made known in Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
I follow the special call city council meeting on Monday, July the sixth, twenty twenty approximately five P M. The order. President Chamber tonight as Mr. Mattney, Ms. King, Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Black, Ms. Kuzma, our Leicester City Attorney, Mr. Bugan, myself, as mayor, our City Administrator, Mr. Brandon Madden, various staff members were not here. This is the word present. The only item on the agendas on the new business, it would be an executive session entertaining a motion to enter an executive session by state statute, section thirty dash forty seventy A one, discussion of employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of an employee, and section A two, which is the receipt of legal advice, was the pleasure of council.
Mayor, move we enter executive session under section thirty dash four dash seventy A one and A two.
Okay, Mr. Mattney has entered the motion, and I have a second.
Second.
I have a second and stereo, Ms. King and Mr. Reynolds. Any discussion? Here now, all those in favor of moving to executive session say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, white sign. Here now, we will go into executive session in terms shortly. As I explained in the outset, you know, a couple items to go over again, at least two items. Yes, we are returning from the executive session. Would someone like to report out, please?
Thank you, Mayor. We're coming back from executive session, six oh one P M. No decisions were made, no votes were taken.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mattney. Before we proceed, possible action on items discussed, I have a statement to read from Councilman Dale Black. After a long, thoughtful, and thorough consideration, please accept this letter as my resignation as mayor pro tempore for the city of Malden, effective immediately. I wish only the best for the city and will make ever effort to repair and rebuild a trust with the citizens of Malden, respectfully, Dale Black, Councilman, City of Malden. Next item, possible action on items discussed in any session. It's discussed in executive session.
I got some people outside. They're all on speaker.
Okay.
Can they do that?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I would like to request that committee of the whole consider by informal method a resolution to censor and admonish Councilman Dale Black.
Thank you, Ms. King, you said a second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Black. One more. Because again, I'm just, with my emotion pertaining to me, I will refuse myself, and I'm not good appropriate for me to be in here, so I, council will have the ability to deliberate freely in this manner. So I will give you this recusal statement, if you can put on file. Do you think, Mr. Black? As the record reflect, that Mr. Black has left council chambers. Okay, we still, we have the motion and the second before us, any discussion? Here now, all those in favor of adopting a resolution to censor and admonish Councilman Dale Black, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, white sign. Here none, the motion carries five zero. Any other?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Weren't we, we were going to consider it committee of the whole and then vote, like, because we have.
You are, it's my fault, my fault. The vote would have been for the committee of the whole by the informal.
Correct.
But you carried, I guess you carried forward the motion, that's why I thought it was on the other. So the vote would be, Mr. Counsel, the vote would have been to consider committee of the whole in informal session, so that was the vote. Now we have the motion for us to adopt a resolution to censor and admonish Councilman Dale Black. Do I have a motion and second on that also? All right, do I, do I have a motion?
We only have the motion and second to enter and to, to have, to consider informally as committee of the whole.
All right.
So now we got to start.
We're in informal session now.
Right.
What's the pleasure of that?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion for council to consider adopting the resolution to censor and admonish Councilman Dale Black.
Okay, I have a motion to adopt a resolution, that's our motion, Dale Black. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second, Mr. Reynolds. Any discussion? Mr. Reynolds.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask that you read the resolution aloud for me before the vote.
All right.
Or I can do it.
Yeah, we can do it, undo it, I don't think. What we have before us is a resolution to censor and admonish Councilman Dale Black. Whereas Councilman Dale Black racially shared racially insensitive posts on his personal Facebook account, and whereas one social media post equated the Confederate flag to the N double A C P, Black History Month, B E T, the Hispanic Scholarship Fund, the Democratic Party, and other organization logos saying if the Confederate flag represents racism, then so do these. And whereas another social media post said this whole racial thing is getting out of hand with the, the taking statues down because one race and only one is offended, but let's play fair. You tried to take my heritage away, let's really take yours, not give you what you think you deserve. And whereas racism is contrary to the ideals of the city of Malden, to be inclusive and welcoming to citizens of all races and ethnicities, and whereas the sharing of these racially insensitive posts by Councilman Black has deeply offended Malden's minority community, and whereas Councilman Black's conduct is inexcusable, fails to uphold the ideals of a publicly elected official, and does not reflect the values of city council, the city of Malden are as citizens. And whereas Councilman Black's conduct has lowered the public's confidence and his ability to serve effectively as a member of the council, and whereas Councilman Black's conduct has brought this honor and shame not only upon himself, but upon this city and its citizens, which rises to a level that requires a formal admonishment and censor. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and members of council of the city of Malden as follows, that the members of council hereby censor and admonish Dale Black for conduct in office that has brought this honor and shame to himself, the city of Malden, and his citizens. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you doing that. I understand that we would also be reading this to Mr. Black if it passes. I just thought it important that the public who chose to come to watch these proceedings get an opportunity to hear it before we resolve. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Reynolds. Any other discussion? Here none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, white sign. Here none, the motion to pass a resolution to censor and admonish Councilman Dale Black passes. Okay, if, Mr. Black. As the record reflect, that Mr. Black has returned to council chambers. Any other items?
Mayor.
Mr. Mattney, move we move to committee of the whole, consider an item with, under the informal method. I have a motion to consider informally as committee of the whole, I have a second.
Second.
Just need a second. Any discussion? We are now voting aye, the committee of the, motion for committee of the whole by the informal method. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, white sign. Here none, we are in committee of the whole informal session.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, move that we adopt a resolution for city council to develop guidelines and education and training opportunities for diversity training and the use of social media for all elected officials, city employees, and persons serving on city boards, commissions, and other capacities for the city, and also providing for public forums for citizens and local business to engage in discussions of diversity issues and provide recommendations for city officials.
Motion, Mr. Mattney, is there a second?
Second.
Just need a second. Any discussion? Here now, all those in favor of the resolution for city council to develop guidelines and education and everything Mr. Mattney said, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, white sign. Here none, the motion is carried six oh. Any other items? Here none. Our next agenda item is under public com, we did request. Mr. Black. Do we consider the night before this council, when voted and passed five zero, is a resolution to censor and admonish Councilman Dale Black? Whereas Councilman Dale Black racially shared racially insensitive posts on his personal Facebook account, and whereas one social media post equated the Confederate flag to the N double A C P, Black History Month, B E T, Hispanic Scholarship Fund, the Democratic Party, and other organization logos saying if the Confederate flag represents racism, then so do these. And whereas another social media post said this whole racial thing is getting out of hand with taking statues down because one race and only one is offended, but let's play fair. You tried to take my heritage away, let's really take yours, not give you what you think you deserve. And whereas racism is contrary to the ideals of the city of Malden, to be inclusive and welcoming to citizens of all races and ethnicities, and whereas the sharing of these racially insensitive posts by Councilman Black has deeply offended Malden's minority community, and whereas Councilman Black's conduct is inexcusable, fails to uphold the ideals of a publicly elected official, and does not reflect the values of city council, the city of Malden are as citizens. And whereas Councilman Black's conduct has lowered the public's confidence and his ability to serve effectively as a member of the council, and whereas Councilman Black's conduct has brought this honor, shame, not only upon himself, but upon this city and its citizens, which rises to a level that requires a formal admonishment and censor. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and members of council of the city of Malden as follows, that the members of council hereby censor and admonish Dale Black for conduct in office that has brought this honor and shame to himself, the city of Malden, and his citizens, adopted this sixth day of July, twenty twenty. Signed, Terry Mary, Mayor. All right, now we get to the public comment session, as I talked to you guys earlier about this, a lot of the speakers are for those on that. We will limit your comment presentations to three minutes or under per person. I would ask you to observe proper decorum observed by members of council, by speakers, and by the audience. Direct your comments to the chair, and please refrain, refrain from abusive and profane remarks, disruptive outbursts, appalling protests, or other conduct that disrupts or interferes with the orderly conduct of business of the media. Personal attacks on council members, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. It is inappropriate to use a public hearing of the public comment here for the purposes of making political speeches, including threats of political action. Engagement in such conduct and failing to cease with such conduct on the request of the mayor will be grounds for any of the speakers' time at the podium, or for removal of any disruptive person from the meeting room at the discretion, direction of the mayor. Those who signed up tonight, uh, Mr. Gene Gore.
Mr. Mayor, there are a couple folks that I was alerted to that are in the lobby area that were unable to come in and sign up. Um, at the end of the folks that you have listed on the signing sheet, once you get to those names, if it's, if it's at your pleasure for let some of the folks that indicated earlier that they wanted to sign up but couldn't come in, that would still want to have an opportunity to speak. Just wanted to make sure you, you and council were aware of that.
Did you, give us your name and address?
Gene Gore, two thirty Tower Boulevard, Greenville. I'm a taxpayer and homeowner in the city of Malden, South Carolina, and I'm here for about three different reasons tonight. I don't know what you mean by admonishing someone, but I don't think that was really explained. Can you tell me what that means? I guess you can't.
I'm not a wordsmith, so I really don't have the.
Does anybody understand what it means, I mean, I'd like to know. Okay.
Yeah, you're on the comment, there's no interaction.
Okay. Now, I'm here tonight, like I said, for two or three reasons. Number one is to support Dale Black's right to express himself under the First Amendment of our Constitution. What he said was wrong, he's admitted it, he's apologized for it, but obviously that was not enough. I'm also here tonight to acknowledge the fact, under the First Amendment, that these protesters have the same right. They have a right to ask for his resignation, and I think the problem you've got here tonight is not going to go away. I mean, I can respect what you did tonight, but you're going to find it's not going to go away. The people want Dale Black to resign, and I think the only way to do that, and I had Googled it today to try to find out, and I've got two different answers. Number one, I'm told on Google that you people sitting here, the council members, can call a special meeting and vote whether to have him resign or not. If you have a majority of you that vote for him to resign, then a special election would be held, and everybody in Malden would get a voice in it. But on the other hand, if you vote and you do not have a majority, so it says, that Mr. Black would continue and serve out the remainder of his term. That may be wrong. I'm told by your city administrator that the only person that can do this is the governor. But if that's true, and I see everybody nodding their head, then let's get off our duffs and call the governor and get it over with, and that way you don't have the embarrassment daily to the city of Malden with people protesting, and it's, nothing's ever come from name-calling and, you know, demands. It's not the way it's done in America, we have laws to go by. So if your governor's the one that's going to call the shots, you six or seven people need it, it's in your laps, it ain't going away. You need to act on it, instead of sitting here avoiding it, thinking it's going to go away, and hiding from the press, and hiding from the protesters. You need to act. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gore. Mr. Randy Evans.
I'll be very brief. Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for allowing me to speak. You know, the Constitution allows for free speech.
State your address, please.
My address is, excuse me, two eleven Springvale Drive here in Malden, two nine six six two. Thank you. Um, I believe the Constitution allows for free speech. What amazes me is whether you agree with me or not, that's okay, and whether I agree with what you say, that's okay too. That being said, I don't think it's right to bully an elected official into resigning any position just because he exercises his right to free speech. And whether you agree with me or not, that's fine, that's, you know, the Constitution allows for that. Now, Dale and I have known each other for probably a lot longer than we'd both like to admit, and we haven't always agreed on things. We haven't ever always agreed on things. But one thing I can tell you this man is not, is a racist. I just like that, to be done. Thank you for your time and allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Teresa Madison? Could you state your name and your address, please?
My name is Teresa Madison. I am a resident of Malden at five Winery Court, and I'm a business owner in Malden at four hundred South Main Street for the last sixteen years, and I lived in Malden for twenty-one. Initially, I was not going to get up here and speak and read what I had put together to say to Dale Black, until, again, as the gentleman before said, we do have a right to free speech, and I do agree with that. But because you have a right to say free speech does not mean you have the right to put someone down, to be disrespectful, and disregard how you will offend them. So with that being said, I'm going to read what I wrote to say to Dale Black. I've been a Malden resident for twenty-one years, and a Malden business owner for sixteen years. As a resident and business owner, I am ashamed and embarrassed, but as a black human being, I was offended. We teach our children to have respect, show respect, be kind, and if you don't have anything nice to say, to keep your mouth closed, regardless whether you have freedom of speech or not. That's just what we teach our children. We also have expectations of those we elect and put in power to lead, to set a higher standard and raise the bar, and to lead by example. Dale Black, you're an elected official who had, and who has a responsibility to represent all of the citizens of Malden. Your being an elected official is a privilege. When you choose to insert your personal prejudice and opinions, you're doing your position and our community a disservice, and you need to separate sides, and I expect that you have. If you were slapped in the face by an employee of a business, you would expect for that employer to keep that first thing on their staff, and you symbetically slapped more than one person in the face with your opinion. An apology is not a free path, and apologizing don't mean what you said should be forgotten. Words have a lasting effect, and an apology of what you did is not just supposed to be accepted. I know, if I can remember, my great-grandfather and my mom used to always say, your thoughts become your words, your words become your actions, your actions becomes your character, and your character becomes your destiny. And I am ashamed that we even having to do this, but as far as the protesting, as the gentleman said before, the embarrassment of the protest, we didn't start this. This is a reaction because of your choice and what you elected to do with what he called your freedom of speech.
Thank you, Ms. Madison. Good afternoon, Curtis Johnson.
Good afternoon. I'm Curtis Johnson, I live in Tupac Black Hole here in Malden, South Carolina. And I want to just say to Mayor Merritt, to the council, thank you for your deliberations and for your considerations. We as concerned citizens and concerned ministers of Malden appreciated the opportunity to meet with you, Councilman Black. Several of the ministers who are a part of our team have spoken well of the relationships that they have with both of you. As counselors, I'm sure that having served several terms on council, I'm sure that each of you on council have your own personal relationships with Councilman Black. And I'm sure that it's probably difficult for all the council members, Mattney, King, Reynolds, Kuzma, to make your individual public statements asking for him to resign. We respect the difficulty of the choices that you've made. I only met with Councilman Black the first time two weeks ago at the mayor's office. He came across as a genuinely friendly, personable gentleman, and while we have obvious disagreements with him, we have expressed publicly and privately that his opposers should treat Councilman Black and his family with dignity and respectful authority. As we have forestated privately as well as publicly, our posture regarding Councilman Black is not a personal vendetta, nor a desire to harm his name or his poster in the community. However, as an elected official and mayor of the city of Malden, we maintain our position that his main, his many publicly shared posts that exploit our racial differences and demean our cultural heritages are incendiary and deeply offensive to a growing number of his Malden constituency who make up all ethnicities. We all acknowledge the fact that every person is entitled to his opinion, and we appreciate the freedom of speech, but even that freedom carries consequences and should not be used recklessly. So as an elected official, his words and actions carry weight, and his words and images can be considered as reflective of the sentiments of Malden, the city council, and in height of such racial tensions across the nation, across the world. We all, as a community, must reject and repudiate any words and images that project hate, divisiveness, or ethnically degraded. We are not seeking to damage him personally, but we are seeking, as you have, as a council, to hold him accountable publicly as a means of making the public statement that we are a better Malden, that the mindset produced, that produced those racially divisive posts. You will make the public statement that we are a community that celebrates diversity and not one that denigrates the populations of its people. You made a public statement that Malden is sensitive to the concerns of all of its people and striving to overcome the offenses that have crippled other cities. This is the Malden we all want, and everyone here should strive to become. I only ask for the request to get more information about the other requests that have been made regarding the citizens' commission, as well as the citizens' advisory board for relationship with the police department, and we understand that this is still a decision that Councilman Black will have to make. We continue to request his resignation, and we thank you for your consideration of our requests. Thank you for your time.
We did not read the resolution and the action council's taken. You might be able to share that with all of us? The second resolution?
Yes. Eric Steele?
Okay, uh, my name is Eric Steele. I live at eight fourteen Rochester Place in South Carolina. I am a former resident of Malden and a current property owner. I just wanted to say a couple things. First of all, I think that Facebook is a disaster waiting to happen. People act and react to things in the heat of the moment, and every, virtually every post that is put on Facebook is going to have some negative comment that comes back in return. I'm not here to defend Dale's actions, I'm here to defend his character. I'm not aware of any history, prior history, of any racial bias on Dale's part. He has no history of racist comments or actions. I believe that Dale is a, is a good man that made a mistake. I've read Mr. Black's apology, and I believe it to be sincere. We have a method to replace elected officials, it's called the vote. If this council decides action is warranted, then I believe it should be a less severe sanction than his, demanding his resignation. One thing I do know is that this continual tit-for-tat he said, she said, is. One thing I do know is that this continual tit-for-tat, he said, she said, is not the answer, and it will never come to an end if that's the case. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Mr. Jim Neighbors? Good record. Please state your name and your address.
Good afternoon. Jim Neighbors, one K Court, Malden two nine six six two. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for allowing me to speak. And thank you for those on the council who responded to emails from me. I just appreciate that. Mr. Merritt, still awaiting your response. Hope it's coming. It seems to me that what's at stake is not Councilmember Black's character. I don't know his character. I just know what he said. What he said, what he posted on Facebook is deeply offensive to me, my wife Jenny, and to everybody that I know in Malden. I teach at Walker College. I've taught a lot of students over the seventeen years I've been there. If I were to have said or posted anything even remotely as offensive as what you did on your Facebook post, I would have resigned immediately. That responsibility to those people is paramount. And I would have damaged them. I would have conveyed to them the idea that somehow I think of them as lesser human beings, that there's some kind of racial hierarchy, on which I'm at the top and they're not. That is profoundly damaging. We have a young child in this room tonight who has to listen to this and get it from his elected officials. That is a disgrace. I appreciate the fact that you've resigned your position as mayor of the town. You need to resign as councilman. So that the work of healing can begin. Healing does not begin without acknowledgement. Acknowledgement must take responsibility, must consist of taking responsibility for one's actions. You've taken steps toward that, but you haven't done it fully. You need to.
If it comes to the end of the list, do we need somebody to leave chambers before?
No.
Are the numbers okay?
Yes.
Please. Yes, please. Please state your name and your address, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Rachel Peppin. I reside at one zero four Brookbend Court in Malden. I've been a resident of Malden for twenty years now. I've enjoyed the intimacies of Malden's community, especially as a suburb of Greenville County. I've been an active member with Malden Recreation, and my family has enjoyed football, basketball, and baseball. My husband's been a coach. I've been a team mom, and our sons are All-Star players. I've served on Malden's, Malden High School's booster club for almost twenty years. I love my city. For twenty years, I've been a neighbor of City Councilman Dale Black. Almost every day when we entered our neighborhood, Dale would wave to us and say hello. I don't doubt that Dale Black has good intentions. But his comments have been very offensive and hurtful to me. I have a responsibility to my community, to expect a better community for our sons that are twenty and twenty years old, that at one point I would want them to return to a Malden that's safe and is welcoming today, tomorrow, and forever. I've served my community and my employer and other nonprofits with the work through diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I certainly appreciate Malden City Council for accepting and understanding the responsibility and the importance of this work. I do expect, as a paying citizen, as a taxpayer of this community, that we as a community expect our city council to align our actions with our talk. I've promised my family that I would give back to my community and be a responsible citizen. And I cannot sit and expect that without saying, without expressing our concerns for City Councilman Black and my neighbor, that it concerns me that we are not at a point that we recognize that the comments are offensive and far too soon. I don't discredit or dis... I don't discredit that Mr. Black had, did not have bad intentions, and you may not be a bad person. But as my neighbor, I expected more, and I, as well as my family, expect more of our community and our community leaders. I'll forever watch your property. I will forever be a model citizen. I will be the person that I expect of the leadership in this community. I will always treat you with platinum rule and treat you with the dignity that you respect, that you expect. But I respect, and I expect the same in return. Freedom of speech is a right that all Americans should have the expectation for. But as an elected official, we expect the level of responsibility for your words and service to the community. I appreciate your service, but I expect better. And I expect more of our city council and my neighbor. I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your consideration. And I trust that as elected officials, we will do what is responsibly, accurate, and appropriate in this community. Thank you so much.
Once again, council, thank you for allowing me to speak. Bruce Wilson with Black Lives Matter also represents white injustice to govern. I am not a Malden resident, but I am a resident of Greenville County, which Malden is within. I've heard a lot about freedom of speech. And I want to take you, Mr. Merritt, through just this weekend of some of that freedom of speech that I received from a gentleman out of Spartanburg, South Carolina. And I can't really use all the language and terminology that he used, but you can probably get the picture as I walk through this. He expressed his willingness to see me hung by a noose. He informed another individual that my house will be blowed up. He then stated that I was a walking dead man and that he wanted to see me dead and that he had planned to kill me. And he was going to kill the individual that lived up the street from him if he didn't denounce me. This is what we're talking about when we say freedom of speech. It has consequences. It has meaning. You cannot believe that it's okay to engage in racist terminology and not understand that it has consequences and meaning. There are people who can die behind that so-called freedom of speech if it's not used wisely. All day today, I have been engaged with the FBI and the U.S. Attorney because of the so-called freedom of speech. And this is not an elected official. So when we have an elected official who has responsibility of not just certain portions of the community, but the whole community, there should be a higher standard. You have to be able to overcome any prejudice that you may have inherently. You have to be able to understand that right now, what black America is dealing with and what this nation is dealing with is painful, is hateful, hurtful. And we all need to come together to make things better. I've been marching and protesting here in Malden. And the reason I was doing it, Mr. Black, is so that my children wouldn't have to do it. That's why I was down here protesting and marching. And it was not an embarrassment because we were down here peacefully to exercise our right. And that right was to ask respectfully but demand that Mr. Black step down. If you truly love this community, as I remember reading a statement from you, you really care about it, I'm here to tell you that the community is hurt. It hurts. I know there are some individuals that will pat you on the back and tell you to keep pushing forward and that you got the freedom of speech to say what you want. But I think they are forgetting that you're an elected official and there is a higher standard that you bear. So I hope that we can end today with the full counsel understanding that this is serious. I understand that freedom of speech, but sometimes that freedom of speech can hurt. Individuals can lose their life. And it's true that individuals lost their lives so we could have that freedom of speech. But we can't use that freedom of speech to hurt the community. Just like I can't run into a movie theater and scream out "fire", Mr. Black cannot use his social media to scream out racism. I hope he leaves today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
My name is Connor Thornton. From Greenville, South Carolina. Springfield. Church I see. Baptist church. They had a lot of Gibson, Senator Anderson, and all the others. Even Reverend Jackson Jackson grew up here. I had a hard time today because I'm always asked what the Bible says. Choose this day who you will serve. For a man can't serve two masters. He will love one or hate the other. You can't say, "I choose to come back to America" and choose the Confederacy at the same time. One operate in love and unity, and the other operate in hate. The Bible say, "Be hot or cold." And God said, "If you are lukewarm, I will spew you out of my mouth." The Confederacy has been a symbol of hate. Show me where any time the Confederacy ever did anything with love to another race. Matter of fact, we don't have to go too far. We can think about the nine oh nine, about church people allowing them to come into their church. And then for whatever reason, I have to pray and repent, he took a gun and murdered me. The Bible said, "Repent." But has South Carolina ever truly repented? South Carolina is one of the fifth states, three out of all of the nation, that still won't promote a hate crime, did it? I seen Bruce Wilson work hard to try to get South Carolina and say, "Hey, the Bible always tell me, nobody knows God if he has hate in his heart." Nobody can say, "I love my brother, but I have hatred in my heart." God even made it clear and say, "You know not me." Life is what we're supposed to be. Supposed to be the light of the world. The Bible tells me so many things. How great it is to build a brotherhood, that we would all want to come together in brotherhood for whatever reason. Darkness cannot cancel out darkness. Only light can do that. Hate cannot cancel out hate. Only law can do that. I can't make you love me. Only God can do that. But we can pass laws that stop you from hating? That's why we have hate crimes built in South Carolina. The community has zero confidence in your ability. The Confederacy never, ever stopped hating. They never, ever stopped hating. Matter of fact, we can sometimes look at what they have done. I want to start with this picture. We talk about George Floyd. But the Confederacy is real in this right here. It's real where hated people function. It's real. I can't even imagine they love Jesus. And watch this happen to people. And our people have been going through this ever since slavery and before. And we still face it now. Thank you so very, very much. God bless you, you may rest. Just look at this picture, and I'll leave this because I'm in this kind of behavior. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since public comment time is, if we've had everybody, I'd like to take a chance to make a public comment as well. There wasn't a council concerns item, so I thought this would be appropriate.
Mr. Counselor, is that allowed?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I agree.
Please, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the past few weeks, residents of Malden and the surrounding areas have presented questions and concerns regarding my colleague Dale Black's Facebook post. While I did not immediately provide a formal statement upon becoming aware of the post, I've held many conversations regarding this issue with members of my community. These candid conversations have presented me with the troubling reality that much education and learning is still needed regarding issues such as this. I disagree with the post shared by Mr. Black, and I do not prescribe to the notions suggested in them. I have members of my community reach out to me, both in support of Mr. Black and in opposition. The reason many have reached out and supported is simple. Mr. Black is a good man. He's a good father, church member, and has been a good representative for and of this city of Malden. He's kind to strangers and hugs his friends. Unfortunately, by sharing this post, Mr. Black brought into question his ability to represent all the cities, all the citizens of Malden. I've read it best from Pastor Johnson when he said these statements were racially provocative at best. And sharing this type of racially provocative material was a reckless representation of our city. Race relations can be an uncomfortable issue to discuss. For many, it's painful, transgenerational, it's a transgenerational issue. However, it's out of this pain that growth can occur. I tell my twelve-year-old son to never waste a great mistake. Use it to grow. And my hope here is that we can use this mistake to grow. We still have so much that we can learn from one another, and that's why I'm proud to call all of you, I'm proud of all you who are here and all the Maldenites who have shown up for this meeting. We, as a community, are diverse, thriving, and committed to excellence. There are those in this community that believe race relations change will occur by standing on these steps and being in these chambers. While I believe this can highlight problems, I do not believe it will solve them. I believe that true change comes not from one-way conversations occurring here, but from conversations in the driveways, on the front porch steps, in our homes and neighborhoods. Driveway conversations with our neighbors about uncomfortable issues. Conversations from one human to another. These driveway conversations that I've had with members in this audience, as a matter of fact, have helped shape my view. My public service as a Christian council member, resident of Malden, and member of this great country is done regardless of race, gender, and sexual orientation, age, or background. And I'm reminded of the oath I took. I will equally, fairly, and impartially, to the best of my ability and skill, exercise the trust proposed in me. And I will use my best endeavor to preserve the peace and carry into effect, according to the law, the purposes for which I've been elected to do so, help God. This moment has caused me to step back and reflect on my role and intentions as an elected public servant. And what I've learned in a short time is the need for improved communication and willingness to listen. And within that spirit, I'm committed to the resolutions that we just passed. We're in uncharted waters here, and as such, need grace as we navigate through it. We each, council member, represent a diverse set of personalities, backgrounds, religions, and opinions. And we each have different, unique approaches to serving. And together, we can each, together, we can learn from each other. And you're here tonight to continue to make Malden progress. And I'm going to end it with a poem. Now, maybe you laughed after this, so don't laugh to it. Do it out there if you're laughing. This struck me as a poem that, I read this a couple of days ago, and it struck me as a moment that this would be a great, great time to share this. It's called "The Cold Within." Six humans trapped by happenstance in dark and bitter cold. Each one possessed a stick of wood, or so the story is told. Their dying fire in need of blocks, the first person held his back. Or of the faces around the fire, he noticed one was black. The next man, looking across the way, saw not one of his church and couldn't bring himself to give the fire his stick of birch. The third one sent a tattered of clothes and gave his coat a hitch. Why should his lung be put to use to warm the idle ridge? The rich men just sat back and thought of the wealth he had in store and how to keep what he had earned from the lazy, shitless poor. The black man's face bespoke revenge as the fire passed from his side. For all he saw in his stick of wood was a chance to spite the light. The last man of this forum group did not accept for game. Giving only to those who gave was how he played the game. Logs held tight in death's still hands was proof of human sin. They didn't die from the cold without. They died from the cold within. That's what James can... As we work through these emotionally charged issues, I'm proud of the people who have showed up here and protested, and just appreciate the chance to serve you all. Thank you. That's all that happens, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. In the other brief legal counsel reminds us, we did not actually read the second resolution. Sort of a, Mr. Mattney, a resolution for city councils to develop guidelines and education and training opportunities for diversity training and the use of social media for all elected officials, city employees, and persons serving on city boards, commissions, and other capacities for the city, and also provided for public forum for citizens and local businesses to engage in discussions of diversity issues and provide recommendations for city officials. Whereas council has not recently reviewed provision of the city code, standing rules of city council, and other policies of the city concerning training, guidelines, and education for the mayor and council, addressing the use of diversity training, community relations, social media, et cetera. And whereas the city employee manual may need review to address the need for diversity training for all city employees. And whereas recent events warrant the consideration by council of the establishment of public forums for citizens, local businesses, the mayor, and council to communicate concern in diversity issues and concerns, and to provide input and guidance for city officials. Now therefore be it resolved that the appropriate committees of council review these matters and make recommendations to council addressing these issues and propose changes to the city code and city policies for the purpose of providing better services to all members of the Malden community. And that was a positive notice to be resolved this sixth day of July, 2020. Signed, Mayor Terry Merritt. Sure, that would conclude our public comment section. Next up on the agenda is the German of West Virginia Council.
I'd like to motion we adjourn this, Mayor.
I'd motion Mr. Reynolds, second. I have a second from Mr. Mattney. All those in favor, our discussion. Here none does in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Here none, we stand adjourned.